Sorry, we're just a few minutes late. The regular scheduled meeting of the Griffin Board of City Commissioners for Tuesday, May the 10th, will please come to order. Our invocation will be given by Da'U Damine.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Take the position of parent, please. With the name of God, the merciful benefactor, the merciful redeemer, all praises and thanks belong to God, the life-giver, keeper and sustainer of all the worlds, the most gracious, most compassionate, master of the day of judgment, thee do we worship, and thine aid we feast. We ask that you show us the straight way, the way of those upon whom you have bestowed your grace, not the way of those whom your wrath has been brought down, nor those who go astray. Amen.
Thank you. Thank you. We have no presentations or delegations, so our first order of business is citizen comments. I will open the floor to comments from the audience. Comments should relate to a specific agenda item not listed on the agenda for a public hearing, or to a concern within the jurisdiction of the city. Commission meetings serve the purpose of conducting city business and are not a forum for the unlimited expression of opinion. The chairperson reserves the right to limit comments to matters germane to city business and may refer speakers to the city manager or other staff for resolution. Having said that, is there anyone on my left who would like to come forward and make a
Name is, uh, D.E. Brooks, and, uh, and the address is 631 North 16th Street.
Yes, sir.
This lot was zoned commercial back in the late eighties, early nineties, and I used it for a storage lot for some years. And, uh, anyway, I went, rented out, and the man go down to get his license, and they can't find no trace of it, the way it was zoned commercial. I do have a survey here, and also have a photo when it was in use, when I had it in use several years ago, with all the cars on it. And I would love to sit back getting it zoned back and grandfathered in.
Uh, Drew?
Have you talked to Mr. Gardner? I think this may be the matter. Frederick, he talked to me about a couple of weeks ago, and according to, as I understand, according to his files, the property was, was it MDR?
Yeah, it's current, um, Mr. Brooks came to us about a month or two ago, probably about a month, about two months ago regarding, um, business license for this location. He was leasing, wanted to lease the space out, um, for storage, uh, for automobile storage. Um, and when we went back and looked at the zoning, the zoning showed it as being residential, and because we didn't have any previous business license tied to the actual property itself, there was no way that we could verify or issue a business license. Um, as we went back and went deeper into our zoning mops, we started getting conflicting, showing where some mops 10, 15 years ago showed the property as being commercial, and then the more recent mops showed as being residential. Um, and because we didn't have any letter or anything that he had correspondence, we couldn't tie it back to a specific date to be able to go back into the meet, into the records to determine when the property was zoned. And I talked to the city attorney about it, and what I found was, back in the mid-nineties, the city actually conducted the citywide zoning rezoning. And at that time, I spoke to Mr. Brooks and told him that there's a possibility that even though he got his property rezoned sometime between 1998 and 2000, 1992, somewhere between 1992 and 1995, his property was rezoned back by the city. Um, but we don't have any records, because he doesn't have any records of, of the rezoning, no letter or anything that ties it. But we do have pictures. He has some aerial photos of when the property was utilized as storage. Um, but at that point, we couldn't issue a business license, 'cause we don't have a verification on this one.
Mr. Brooks, may I, may I, Mr. Brooks?
Hi.
Here, over, on this side, over here. May I, may I tell you, this citywide rezoning in the early nineties was a total debacle. It was done with magic markers or something. I've had two pieces of property that got changed in that zoning for no reason. Uh, Newton Crouch Manufacturing, also across the street from mine, was zoned to residential during that debacle. The only thing we could do is to come back and apply for rezoning and put it back to commercial like it was, or industrial like it was before, they just blanket change things. And I went through that twice to correct this sort of thing that you're in. So if you'll put in for a rezoning, go fill out the paperwork. Uh, that's the only way I could clear up mine, 'cause there were no records.
But this, this lot, I was, it was in use, I was using it back in the eighteen years. And I don't see how it just got stolen back, and me using it at the same time.
Newton Crouch down here Manufacturing, been a manufacturing company for a hundred years, and it got rezoned residential. Newton Crouch, who's building fertilizer and water equipment, had to go back and rezone because it'd been changed during that time. Lots of us did, through no fault of our own, or no fault of yours, it was just done.
It was somebody's fault.
Well, that, that's neither here nor there. The only way you can undo it is to get a rezoning, and I think you'll get a friendly hearing, but you gotta go through the process to make it legal.
Right, now, uh, and I would think we would waive the fee.
I'd be cautious before I start saying I'd waive the fee. I mean, it's, the official zoning map is...
Well, it's not his fault.
Well, we don't know that. I mean, I think each time you've done a citywide rezoning, you've given appropriate notice in accordance with the zoning procedures law. So even though somebody doesn't pay attention to that notice when they get it, it's still binding on them. So, you know, I, I would recommend you follow your official zoning map, which is what Frederick has done, and it shows the property not to be commercial. And I think Mr. Morris is correct, that what he needs to do is file a petition to rezone it to commercial, if that's what he wants it to be.
Right, well, I agree with that, but I, I would also like to research and make sure that notices were sent out, if you're...
Oh, they were. I can assure, I can assure you each time that there was a citywide...
It always worries me when an attorney tells me, oh, they were...
Notice, notices went out with tax bills on those things each time. So when you got your tax bill, you should've had a notice inserted in the envelope with it. That's the only individual notice. All other notice was given by publication in the paper, and by signs, we put up some large signs at the city limits around the city, advising people that there is a rezoning going on. Mr. Brooks, I can tell you, one of these comes up about every year in front of this board. Something was changed at that time, and somebody comes back in to rezone and correct it. I don't have an answer for you, except you just have to go through it like we all did.
Well, I guess I have to do what you say, but I should all think it's right.
Uh, I agree with you.
Right. We, we agree with you, sir, but we weren't in, none of us were on the board.
And I thought, I only included the zoning warrant, and City Commission's want to get this thing zoned back several years ago, and all it wants is me in use. This thing's in use, so I got stole over that way, and they all want to switch it back to another zone.
Right, well, we didn't do that.
Well, Mr. Brooks, I'll say this, I had one piece of property that I managed to find the minutes of the time, and the minutes showed it'd been changed, and I got one corrected, but unless you can find official record, I just got lucky. You gotta pay to rezone it then. So it might not be right, but that's legal. They don't necessarily agree.
This, this don't, I mean, this ain't no kind of proof, man.
We appreciate you coming, though, sir. This is the only way to get your, the grievances redressed, and, uh, you've done the right thing by coming before the board and informing us. Uh, but I can't overrule the city attorney. Is there anyone else on my left who would like to come forward and make a statement? On my left? If not, then is there anyone on my right who would like to come forward? Come on up, sir.
We got, we got one on the left here.
Oh, we do have one on our left? Okay, we've got one over here, then one over there. Please, no, come on, yes. We divide the room here.
My name's Lee Wright. Uh, I live at 1851 Carrington Drive.
I can't, I can't, you, what's your name again?
Lee Wright.
And what's your address?
1851 Carrington Drive.
Carries Drive?
Carrington.
Oh, Carrington.
Right off, uh, South Pine Hill. Uh, what, I wonder how you get a speed limit sign, or children play? I got a young son, and there's no speed limit sign, no speed bumps, you know, and there's a couple of our houses with kids, and, you know, people just ride through, 'cause there are no speed limit sign, they, they do fifty-five miles an hour.
Our Public Works Director sits right there. He's the one that puts up the signs.
And our police are the ones who, uh, check the mileage, so you've got Chief Strickland and Dr. Keller.
Well, we actually have a, a city policeman living in there, but, you know, he sleeps during the day.
Just during the day, huh?
I want to say, Mr. Wright brought this to my attention, and I went out there, and he's correct. Uh, I, I stayed out there only about forty-five minutes, and I saw excessive speeding on a regular basis, and within those forty-five minutes.
Uh, Chief Strickland, will you converse with, with, uh, Mr. Carrington after the meeting?
Mr. Wright.
Mr. Wright, I'm sorry, Carrington Drive. That, that sounded good, though, didn't it? All right, thank you. We're sorry about that, too. All right, now, anyone else on my left who would like to come forward and make a statement? Anyone on my right who would like to come forward and address the commission?
Uh, I have a little request, um...
Wait a minute, go to the, the mic. I'm not gonna have control of this, but, you know. It must be... Sir, when you get, when you get back to the microphone, would you please give us your name and address for the record?
Hey, Kirit, how you doing?
Nothing much, it's more than... Thank you.
Go ahead, tell them who you are and...
Right, you gotta give us your name and address for the record. You might need to pull the mic down a little bit.
Yeah, my turn. Uh, Mr. Mayor and the councilors, my name is Kirit Sett. I'm representing every liquor store, package store, and retail alcohol sellers. On behalf of all of you, uh, I'm requesting city to put a cap on alcohol issuing the licenses. And, uh, that's where we can stay in business. If competition increasing, pricing going down, expenses going up, and it's hard to stay in business. So I request city to look on the existing businesses, if they can stay in business, and, and survive.
Again, our city attorney's gonna have to address this.
Well, unfortunately...
Because we, it is controlled by law.
Unfortunately, it is controlled, and it's controlled by state law. Your ability to issue alcohol licenses does not allow you to issue exclusive licenses. In other words, you have to open it up to anybody who comes who meets your qualifications. And about the only thing that can be done is to put a, a spatial distance between package stores, which I believe, Frederick, don't we still have it's a thousand feet? Yeah, it's in the ordinance today.
Twenty-five hundred, twenty-five hundred, city rules. Twenty-five hundred, two thousand five hundred from one package to the package.
I think the city's ordinance is a thousand feet, uh, at this point. And one time, we did have fifteen hundred, and the courts have been whittling that down, frankly, so that you can't, you know, have a, an excessive distance.
I know, but, uh, you know, if you put the cap on it, then existing business can stay, otherwise, if you keep issuing the license...
Well, several years ago, we went to a corridor system here in Griffin, which had been upheld by the courts in a case out of Stockbridge, right before we did it here. And that's about the only other means of, of limiting that, coupled with the thousand-foot distance between applicants. It's about the only means to, to legally limit how many ultimate licenses are issued.
Legal limited, I understand that, and you can do that way. But in, in comparison to the populations, and compared to the situation of the Griffin, Griffin is a small town. I can say that, I tell Griffin is an island. It's not a water island, but it's a land island, which is completely an individual city surrounded by ten miles of any other cities. So same people, you do the business, the same people every time.
Right, I, I understand where you're coming from.
If you're issuing more, looking all this fact, you know, the business, fact of the business side, if you look all these things, consider all these things, I really appreciate that way.
Thank you so much, sir. We appreciate you bringing this to our attention, and we understand the competition that you're under right now, and the, and the economy.
Correct.
Thank you. Is there anyone else on my right who would like to come forward and make a comment? If not, then we're going to go into our public hearings. Public hearings are, are conducted to allow public comment on specific advertised issues such as rezoning, ordinances, policy development, operating budgets, and other legislative actions to be considered by the city commission. Item number one is to receive comments regarding the first reading of an ordinance amending the charter of Griffin, Georgia pursuant to the authority granted at OCGA Section 36-35-4.1 in accordance with the procedure set forth at OCGA Section 36-35-3, one B, to reapportion the municipal election district based upon the 2010 decennial census. City Attorney Drew Wellen will address.
About a year ago, you started down the, the road of knowing that the task of reapportioning your election districts was going to come shortly after the new census results were published, which they were the latter part of March of this year. I think you've been well-prepared for this, and you realize that under the state law, in order to comply with the Fourteenth Amendment's one-person, one-vote standard, that you're given the authority by home rule ordinance, which is a particular type of ordinance, it follows a special process in Georgia law, to amend your own charter to do this process yourself, rather than having to go to the General Assembly and have them draw up a map and adopt districts for you. So this is the first tonight of two readings. The second reading has to occur at a consecutive regular meeting, which will be on our meeting of the 24th. The plan that's incorporated into the home rule ordinance is what we call Plan Three. You had a workshop a couple of weeks ago, which I think was a very successful workshop that morning, and I applaud you for the, for the spirit which you came in here, you were objective, you were prepared, and I think you worked together very well that day in seeing how Griffin has changed over the last year, ten years demographically. And as a result of that workshop, you formulated what we're referring to as Plan Three, which is incorporated by reference into the ordinance. There's a copy of the map up here showing the respective district boundaries, and attached to the ordinance is Exhibit B, is a stat sheet, or a statistic sheet, for this particular plan. One of the requirements that you're governed by under the Federal Voting Rights Act is that any new change or new plan that you adopt cannot be retrogressive of the voting rights that have been achieved for minorities by current plan. So the benchmark for this was the plan that was adopted after the 2000 census. We're proposing this plan, once it goes through the home rule process, which is state law process, it will be filed with the Secretary of State, and I'll then submit this plan to the Department of Justice Civil Rights Division Voting Section for their review under Section Five. And what they're going to look for is to make sure it doesn't retrogress the rights that have already been accomplished through, uh, through the current or benchmark plan. And I feel like we have a good plan to offer to the Department of Justice, and it's one that hopefully we'll have all of our preclearances back well in time to qualify to hold elections under this plan to become effective January 1st. So the persons who'll be running for that large seat, of course, is not really affected by district, but you've got District Two and District Four, which will also be qualifying in late August of this year. So we're, we're under somewhat of a time constraint, but I think we're gonna make it very well.
Okay.
So with that background, I, what I'd hope for tonight, part of the process that justice looks for, is citizen participation. And I hope we've got some citizens here who've had a chance to study it, we've advertised it according to law, and I hope there, if somebody wants to come forth and, uh, and tell you how they feel about it, and you'll consider whatever, you know, considerations that they, they put forth in the comments.
All right, and we've heard our city attorney. We're conducted, uh, public hearings are conducted to allow public, public comment. At this time, do we have anyone, uh, on our left that would like to come forward and make any comment on the redistricting process? Do we have anyone on my right? Come forward, Ms. Shannon. We appreciate...
You're the designated citizen.
Right.
After an invitation like that from the city attorney, how could I not come up here? Shannon Heron, 413 Terrace Street, Griffin. I would like to say that I was here for the hearing a couple of weeks ago. It was one of the best displays of cooperation and consideration among, uh, city commission that I have ever seen. I appreciate that each of you had done your homework and came prepared to make concessions and ask for what you needed. Um, I've reviewed the map. I'm pleased with how it's turned out. The numbers, the last time I saw them, seemed to be in line with what the feds want, so your citizen representative tonight said, I think it's a good deal.
Thank, thank you. And Ms. Joel, I know that you had lots of, you, you had some input when we did this several weeks ago. Is there anything else you might, would like to add?
I live at 103 MacGyver Drive.
Can you pull the mic down a little bit, Joel? There you go.
I live at 103 MacGyver Drive, and I'm president of Griffin Branch and double ACP. And yes, I was here, or, at the time, at the workshop, and I don't know that I have anything new to say, but I too was pleased with, uh, uh, the distribution of, uh, the numbers and the fact that it's not, I don't see it as being progressive, but I don't see it as being regressive either. So, uh, that's what we were going for, make sure that we did not, uh, regress, and, uh, I, I, I do not plan to object as it stands to, uh, what we did, and as much as we did have some input in the final outcome of it. So considering all of the factors, uh, and the distribution of the population, I thought it was, uh, fairly done, except as I said, I didn't see progression, but I also did not see any regression.
Thank you. We appreciate that so much. Is there anyone else who would like to come forward and make a comment? If not, then we'll go on to item number two under public hearings. Receive comments regarding a request to rezone approximately twenty point twenty-four plus or minus acres located at 233 North Sixth Street from planned commercial district to medium density residential for the Spalding County Land Bank Authority. Uh, Frederick Gardner will address. Good evening.
Yes, ma'am. Good evening, uh, Mayor, Commissioners. Uh, this is rezoning 11, R-E-Z-O-1. Uh, the applicant is the Lamb, Griffin Spalding Land Bank Authority, seeking rezoning of this property located at 233 North Sixth Street, consisting of point two-four plus or minus acres from planned commercial district to medium density residential. Uh, the request is, the request to rezone the property would be to facilitate the Land Bank selling this property as part of our neighborhood stabilization program. As you know, this property was purchased, and at the time it was missed, the property was zoned, um, commercial rather than residential, and has always been utilized as a residential structure. Going back to the issue that we just, uh, heard a citizen comment about, the issue of rezoning the property, this was one of those properties that was caught in that, probably caught back then in that citywide rezoning. Um, so the Land Bank is willing to, is requesting that this property be rezoned, um, so that they can move forward with the sale of this property.
Okay. This is a public hearing. Do we have any comments regarding this, uh, particular item?
I have a question. This is in Commissioner Evans' district, if I remember right.
That is correct.
Do you have any objection to this? I don't have an objection. Good, thank you.
Okay, very good, thank you. Okay, uh, we'll now go into our consent agenda. We will consider approval of the minutes of the regular scheduled meeting on April the 26th, 2011, and minutes of the workshop on April the 26th, 2011.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve both sets of minutes as corrected. Do you have both little minor corrections here this evening?
Yes.
Second motion.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Okay, it is unanimous, thank you. Okay, now into the regular agenda. Consider first reading of an ordinance amending the Charter of Griffin, Georgia pursuant to the authority granted by, at OCGA Section 36-35-4.1 in accordance with the procedure set forth in OCGA Section 36-35-3, one in parentheses B in parentheses, to reapportion the municipal election district based upon the 2010 decennial census. Do I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I move we approve on first reading this ordinance, approving what's known as Plan Three.
Do I, uh, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Did you raise, yeah, it's unanimous, Judy, thank you.
Whose second did that?
I did.
Ryan did.
Okay.
Uh, item number five, consider request to rezone approximately point twenty-four plus or minus acres located at 233 North Sixth Street from planned commercial district to medium density residential for the Spalding County Land Bank Authority.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the zoning from PCD to MDR. Second motion.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Okay, it is unanimous, Judy, thank you. Item number six, consider the fiscal year 2012 subscription for services provided through Electric Cities of Georgia in the amount of $339,796.
Make a motion to approve. Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Okay, it is unanimous, thank you. Number seven, recognize the refund of $3,775.69 from the MEAG Telecom year-end settlement and direct the refund to be placed in the Municipal Competitive Trust Flexible Operating Account Short-Term Portfolio.
Madam Chair, I heartily suggest we approve accepting the refund.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. All right, it is unanimous, thank you. Item number eight, recognize the refund of the MEAG year-end settlement in the amount of $834,573, and direct the funds to be deposited in the Municipal Competitive Trust Flexible Operating Account Short-Term Portfolio.
Chair, I even more heartily move that we accept this bigger refund.
And I think...
Second motion.
We had several seconds there. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Okay, it is unanimous, Judy, thank you. Number nine, consider the schedule for City of Griffin Cemetery for fiscal year 2011, 2012.
Make a motion to approve the recommended schedule. Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. That is unanimous also, Judy, thank you. Item number 10, consider new rates for fiscal year 2011, 2012 for the City of Griffin Municipal Golf Course. I move that we approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. And it is unanimous, thank you. Uh, city manager, do we have a report?
Yes, ma'am. Representative Wes Moreland will be at the County Annex Meeting Room on May the 18th from 3:00 to 4:00 p.m., and he would like to invite you and I, and others who may be interested to, uh, attend that meeting, who'll make a brief statement, and then be available to take any questions that we have.
And what time is that?
3:00 until 4:00 p.m.
3:00 to 4:00 p.m., okay.
May the 18th. I'm not sure what day of the week that is, I haven't looked.
That is a Wednesday.
Uh, and we were talking earlier, for those of you who may not know, Mr. Elmer George, uh, is no longer a resident of Griffin. I think he had some health issues and has gone to live with a relative in North Carolina?
Yes.
Is that where it is? So, uh, we will miss Mr. George, whom this room is named after, and, uh, hopefully he'll be visiting us again. Next Tuesday, the city is sponsoring Entrepreneur Day at the Welcome Center. We've invited, uh, franchises, small businesses, and entrepreneurs to come in. Our economic development staff will have an Entrepreneur Day, so I would like to invite you to stop by the Welcome Center. Uh, the county will be considering the 155 relocation at their meeting on May the 16th, if you're interested in hearing that. Several of us attended a public hearing last week, I believe, where many of the same people who came here and made comments the night we had a joint meeting also made similar comments at that meeting, and they'll be taking that vote on May the 16th. And finally, I want to, uh, relay thanks to our employees and, and the many volunteers from the city who've really been working hard, uh, in the storm recovery. We worked hand-in-hand with Spalding County, uh, gave them everything they've asked for, and then more. Uh, I do want you to know that we're a tad bit behind on our yard waste pickup. If your constituents start making comments, because we, we took almost every clam truck and, and truck that we had out to try to remove some of that debris, so those people could, could clear out a little bit, get it off their houses, or off their property, whatever, so we are a few days behind, but we'll get caught up. We pulled most of our clams back in today, uh, so we'll get caught up in the city.
May I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
Is that fellow with the chipper business still out at the landfill? So he's booming now.
Yes, and he was just, he was just about to leave because he had no business.
So he's got everything he needs.
God works in mysterious ways. God works in mysterious ways.
He's got more than he needs, and, and just, uh, another note, I got a sizable contribution today from, uh, one of your fellow councilmen over in Noonan, who had called me and wanted to, to make a donation to our Spalding County victims, and he sent it to me to make sure it got in the right hand, Councilman Coggins from the City of Noonan. So I just wanted you to know that, I received that today, and I'll send it to the proper place.
Very good, very good. Drew?
Nothing further.
Okay, uh, should I hear?
Yes, I, I just wanna thank our, our emergency work, Mr. Bosch, and all the people that helped in the, in the emergency efforts. Uh, you did an outstanding job, and we do appreciate, I got emails all throughout the whole thing, and we really appreciate the work, uh, that you're doing.
I'll say amen a second to that.
Absolutely.
Great job, and we've heard good things about the city. I just wanted to mention, I went to Law Enforcement Recognition banquet the other evening, uh, for the Griffin Judicial Circuit, and two of, uh, the chief's alumni were awarded, uh, recognition, Lemmy Mercado and Jeremy Bennett, who are policemen who are now with, uh, Southern Crescent as instructors, so you raised a good crop over there, chief, uh, good folks, I'm sorry they moved across the street. But Cap, Corporal Mike Morris was in the finalists for Law Enforcement Analyst of the Year.
Wow.
And very impressive, so-
Right.
The city was represented there in the finalists, he didn't make the top number, but it's a great honor to be in the finalists, so good work for Corporal Morris.
Absolutely, Doug.
The budget that was presented today, compliments to the staff, your hard work, um, it's something that we were able to digest and hopefully live with over the next twelve months, and again, I've heard nothing but praise and compliments from your team, Mr. Smith, in terms of the storm, whether it's county commissioners, or whether it's citizens, or just whoever, they're just very proud of the team that City of Griffin's put together, blessings to all y'all for everything you've done, thank you.
Ryan?
Piggyback on that, I can't say thanks enough to everybody out there, it went and helped a lot. It hasn't since this last meeting, and seems like a lot happened, and a lot of time's gone by, but I, I guess we really kinda saw a display of what makes all the people in this city and this county so great, and why we wanna be up here. So, uh, I do appreciate all the efforts that you guys put in, and it's a lot of hard work, and a lot of emotional work, so thanks for that, and, and also thanks to staff for such a detailed budget presentation this morning, I thought, I thought it was very good, and it gets me excited about the things that we get to do, coming up.
Yeah, he's a CPA, figures excite him, you know? That's weird, isn't it? Will, anything?
Yeah, I'd like to say, um, I would like to give a compliment to the citizens of Griffin. Uh, during the, uh, time of storm, see people stepping up to the plate, having a heart for one another, it's worth gonna take for us to move on into the future. As for the, um, department heads, y'all did an outstanding job. My lights went out and they came back on, Bill, so I don't know whether you guys had a switch or what have you, but I appreciate that. You guys do a fantastic job.
Thank you, and of course, I have to echo everything, and on, at least Atlanta radio, uh, TV today, uh, Secretary of HUD, Sean Donovan, talked about the citizens of the City of Griffin, and the government of the City of Griffin, and how it helped Spalding County, uh, clean up this mess, and the fact that, uh, we have gone out of our way to be brothers, so to speak, as far as this community, and it does make you proud to know that we, when the chips are down, we are there, and, and it's a matter of pride. I also appreciate, uh, being able to give out the awards at the Lineman's Rodeo last Saturday. I don't know when, I've had more fun. Uh, so many fine young men, got to flirt with a couple of them, got a hug from one of them, and so, I wanna tell you, it's wonderful to have these young people in government service, and even a couple of our gray-haired employees got, uh, awards. Griffin came out very well in the Lineman's Rodeo last Saturday, and, um, again, this is another compliment to our city, to our manager, and to our department heads, and especially Mr. Bosch at this particular time. Uh, you know, all of you are great. Uh, I don't know that we have anybody that we cannot say is doing their job and making us proud to be citizens of Griffin. Yes?
If I might, I'd like to thank all the departments, because I knew the captain, Brandon, I knew the captain, the manager, Robert, Chief, Chief, uh, so we couldn't pull it off, because I had a ton of things that needed to be done, and they just said, where do you need to go?
Right, you know, and I had to be rescued at the very end, I mean, this cute fellow just hugged me, and, you know, and he was gonna lead me by the hand out the door, and I said, wait a minute, I need to introduce you to my husband of fifty-six years. And so, I, I think I was saved, but I'm not sure if that was it or not. All right, do we have any other business? Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So will.
All right.
Second.
All right, all in favor, say aye. Okay, we are adjourned.